Looks like some people are having trouble getting on.
Ms. Mayor's just joined. If Pete speaks.
Yes, that's who's, did he get, did he get on Adam?
He's, he just joined, I'll promote him now.
Okay, then that's who we were waiting, yeah, he was, okay.
Good evening to everyone, it is now five o'clock PM. Good evening and welcome on this Monday, May tenth, two thousand twenty twenty one. To welcome you all. The purpose of this meeting this evening is to conduct a public hearing to address the proposed application from the PA, from the Pennsylvania Nurses Middle College Charter School. I'd like to officially turn the meeting over to our district solicitor, Ms. Allison Peterson of the Levin Legal Group. Ms. Peterson, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Samuels, and welcome everyone. As Dr. Samuels indicated, I'm the district special counsel with respect to charter matters and will be the presiding officer for purposes of tonight's hearing. The hearing is being held under Policy one forty, which establishes a procedure for new charter school applications and also establishes the role of the presiding officer for purposes of tonight's hearing. As Dr. Samuels indicated, we are here for the first hearing on the Pennsylvania Nurses Middle College Charter School application. That application was received by the school district on March thirtieth, two thousand twenty one. The application is being processed in accordance with the charter school law and we will talk a little in a bit about just the general procedures that are applicable to new applications. Before we get to that, however, I think it would be pertinent for the record to have those in attendance tonight identify themselves. Tonight's hearing is being held virtually via the Zoom platform. It is also being livestreamed on YouTube, on the district's YouTube channel, so that the public can participate by either watching the hearing through the livestream or participate via the Zoom platform. The hearing was advertised in the newspaper. It's been advertised as well on the district's website and anyone who was interested in providing public comment was given instructions on the mechanisms for how that would be taken. So, let's get to the record notations as to who is here for both the district and the applicant. I'm gonna have, starting with Dr. Samuels, then the school board members and then the school district administration, identify yourselves for purposes of the record, please.
Thank you, I'm good evening, I'm Janet Samuels, the court appoint receiver for the Harrisburg School District.
Good evening, I'm Jim Thompson, I am the elected school board president.
Other school board members in attendance?
My name is Doug, I'm a leader and I'm a school board member.
Steven Williams, I'm a school board vice president.
It's Steve Williams, you said?
Yes.
Steven Williams, if you were unable to hear, he's the board vice president.
Vice president, thank you.
Yes.
If, are there any other school board members on the line? Okay, then Mr. Selmer, why don't you kick us off for the administration?
Yes, good evening, Chris Selmer, acting superintendent, Harrisburg School District.
Good evening, Susan Smith, chief academic officer for Harrisburg School District.
Good evening, Dr. Latrice Mumeen, director of the Office of Accountability for the Harrisburg School District.
Good evening, Craig Glass, director of operations for the Harrisburg School District.
Good evening, Lori Lillis, director of human resources for the Harrisburg School District.
Good evening, Christine Anderson, board secretary.
And good evening, Adam Northold, director of IT for the Harrisburg School District.
All right, did we get everyone on behalf of the district?
I believe so, Ms. Peterson, yes.
Okay, it's hard to see everybody's little squares on the Zoom to make sure we covered everybody. So, if anyone is missed as we go through this process, please speak up. So now, starting with Ms. Snook or Mr. Morford, why don't you begin introducing yourselves and your team who are present on behalf of the applicant here tonight?
Why don't I jump in first, my name is Mark Morford, I'm with law firm McKenna Snyder and I'm representing the applicant here tonight.
Thank you. Betsy Snook, I'm the CEO of the Pennsylvania State Nurses Association and the Nursing Foundation of Pennsylvania.
Jennifer Nightig, chief of staff, Pennsylvania State Nurses Association.
Marguerite Erbey, I'm the finance director for PS today and for the Nursing Foundation of Pennsylvania.
For the P, I'm sorry, the initials again.
For Pennsylvania State Nurses Association.
Thank you.
Paula?
Paula Lyszewski, I'm director of development for the Nursing Foundation of Pennsylvania.
Board members that are present?
Peter Speaks, the board chair of the Pennsylvania Nurses Middle College.
Oh, you faded out there, Peter, I'm sorry.
Peter Speaks.
Yes, sir.
Board chair of the Pennsylvania Nurses Middle College Charter School.
Thank you.
Michael Miller is a board member for the applicant, for Margot Lestalstein.
Chris Selectney, board member of the middle college.
Cory Dupree, a board member of the Pennsylvania Middle College, Nurse Middle College.
And one of our other guest speakers, Jesse.
Good evening, Jesse Bean, Charter Choices, we're the business manager for the applicant.
And Doug?
I'm Doug Nightig, I'm Greenworks Development, here to answer any questions about the building.
And Deanna?
Good evening, I'm Dr. Deanna Mayers, I am the service executive director of Pennsylvania ASCD and also working with the PSNA Curriculum Group for their curriculum.
And I don't know if there's anyone else on either, because I can't see everyone. So, is that it for PSNA and the NFP? Hearing none, I believe so.
This, Ms. Peterson, I believe one other member of our administrative team has joined us.
Sorry.
But I don't, I didn't hear Mr. Selmer, who else joined? Could that person repeat themselves?
Good afternoon, this is George Longrich, director of business services for Harrisburg School District.
Good evening, Mr. Longrich, thank you. All right, have we gotten everyone accounted for in terms of the introductions?
Ms. Merrick was introducing herself and then that's the audio that you had heard. So, Agoura, if you wanted to go?
Gloria Merrick. Gloria?
I'm Gloria Merrick and I'm on the. Can you hear me okay?
So Gloria, what was your, you said your name, what would you say after that, I'm sorry?
I'm on the, I'm on the, I'm on the board of the middle charter school.
Oh, okay.
And I'm the executive. Thank you.
Okay, so, so this was a good exercise on how we're gonna have to go about this hearing, making sure that Mr. Corcoran, who is our court reporter here tonight, can hear and take down what is being said. So if there comes a time tonight when you, Mr. Corcoran in particular, but others, cannot hear the audio, then folks need to say something so that we can ensure that we have a good transcript for purposes of the record in this case. There may be times where the Zoom feed and the video might freeze up. The video is not as important as the audio because the audio is what is going to determine what's in the transcript going forward. So, again, I encourage everyone to try not to speak over someone else, if at all possible. I know this is, is a difficult endeavor via the Zoom, but I think we can make it work and make it work well so that our record is clean. We, let's deal with some housekeeping items before we get to the applicant's presentation. If there are members of the public who are in attendance, I think it would be appropriate for some description to be provided about the purpose of, of tonight's hearing as well as the process that will be followed. Under the charter school law, for any charter school application, a hearing must be held within forty-five days of receipt of the application. This hearing is being held tonight within that forty-five day window. And again, because of the pandemic, the receiver is fulfilling the hearing function and the hearing requirement by holding this hearing via Zoom and being via virtual mechanisms with the YouTube feed as well as the Zoom platform. Time will be set aside tonight to receive public comments from residents of Harrisburg. Under Policy number one forty, public comments are typically limited to two minutes per resident. However, because of the virtual platform, the public comment process, as advertised to the public, was that comments needed to be emailed to the board secretary by four PM this evening. Any comments that were received in a timely way via email or dropped off to the district, essentially received through some mechanism by that four PM deadline, will be read by the board secretary and included as part of the record for tonight's hearing. The purposes of tonight's hearing is to provide additional information for the receiver to make an informed decision on the application. Under the charter school law, the decision has to be made no earlier than forty-five days from tonight's hearing and no later than seventy-five days from tonight's hearing. The charter school law requires the application to be evaluated by the local school directors or in this case, for Harrisburg by the receiver, based upon criteria that includes but is not limited to the following information. Number one, the demonstrated sustainable support for the charter school plan by parents, teachers, other community members and students, including any comments received at the public hearing. Number two, the capability of the charter school applicant in terms of support and planning to provide comprehensive learning experiences to students. Number three, the extent to which the application considers the information requested in section seventeen nineteen dash A of the charter school law and also conforms to the intent that is set forth in section seventeen oh two dash A of the charter school law. And finally, the extent to which the charter school may serve as a model for other public schools. As part of the decision-making process, the receiver will have to make a determination as to whether the application meets these requirements or whether there are any deficiencies with respect to these requirements. If a charter is granted, a charter will be developed. It may be for a period of no less than three years and no more than five years. If the receiver denies the application, the applicant may file an appeal in accordance with the procedures that are set forth in the charter school law or it may file a revised or resubmitted application. That's essentially the procedures that are set forth in the charter school law. As I indicated earlier, the district has adopted Policy number one forty that adds to the process and provides some information to applicants as to what to expect at the hearing itself. The procedures that the school board prior to the receiver had adopted and which the receiver is also following for purposes of tonight are these. The applicant will be given an opportunity to make an opening presentation of no more than thirty minutes. Questions may be directed to the applicant at that time. The board will also accept public comments on the application. The district administration will be able to make a, an evaluation presentation of its own and questions may be directed to the administration. At the end of that process, the applicant will also be given an opportunity to make a closing presentation of no more than thirty minutes, if they so desire. And then following the, the end of the hearings, the applicant will also be given an opportunity to submit proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law to assist the district and the receiver in the further evaluation and decision on the application. That is not a requirement, but the, the district provides the applicant with that opportunity if you desire to submit that type of document. For purposes of tonight, the receiver has decided that there will be more than one hearing held. That means we are going to do about half of those things that I just described tonight at this hearing and then reconvene for a second hearing on a date to be determined in the future. For tonight, we're gonna hear the opening presentation of the applicant. There will be some preliminary questions asked to provide some clarity about the application and then we will accept whatever public comments have been received by the district by the four PM deadline today. Those will be read into the record for purposes of the transcript. At that point, the hearing will then be recessed and again, we will reconvene at a date to be determined. Does anyone have any questions about that process that I just outlined?
No.
Great. The other housekeeping item that we are going to address before we get to the applicant's presentation is to mark some exhibits for purposes of the record. The application that was filed on March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one is going to be marked as exhibit number one. We have bait stamped that document, the totality of it, just for ease of reference. And I believe there were one thousand nine hundred and ten pages in the document. So the totality of pages one through one thousand nine hundred and ten will be marked as exhibit one. There was also a letter that was sent from me to attorney Morford dated April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. That letter provided notice of the date of the hearing as well as a deadline for submission of supplemental materials. That letter of April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one will be marked as exhibit number two. The applicant provided a few materials in supplement by the deadline that was established in the letter. Those additional materials have also been bait stamped and marked for the record and the totality of the supplemental materials will be marked as exhibit number three. Those documents have been bait stamped at page numbers one nine one one through one nine one seven. And again, those will be exhibit three. I think it is now time to turn the floor over to the applicant to make its opening presentation. I can keep time unless Ms. Anderson has a timer that she could keep?
I do, just let me know the time, please.
Okay, thirty minutes, please. Okay.
Thank you very much, again, I'm Betsy Snook, the CEO of the Pennsylvania State Nurses Association and the Nursing Foundation of Pennsylvania. Thank you, Dr. Samuels, Ms. Peterson and the Harrisburg School Board for the opportunity to come before you today to, again, share with you the vision and mission of the Pennsylvania Nurses Middle College Charter High School under development. The vision for our school is to create this unique, inspired and supportive secondary public school experience where students will attain a quality high school to professional nursing healthcare education. And we'll do that by assisting a diverse student population to master the essential academic, social and emotional knowledge and skills necessary for entrance into a post-secondary professional baccalaureate nursing education and healthcare career. Again, the founding organizations here were the Pennsylvania State Nurses Association, where our vision is nurses shaping the future of healthcare and the Nursing Foundation of Pennsylvania, our five oh one C three organization whose vision is ensuring nurses for tomorrow through scholarship. Pennsylvania State Nurses Association participated in the Institute of Medicine's two thousand ten Future of Nursing Report that offered eight recommendations. And I'd like to be able to share with you tonight the two thousand twenty to two thousand thirty Future of Nursing Report, but that report is not due out until tomorrow. So the eight recommendations that came from the original Institute of Medicine report, one of which was to increase the number of baccalaureate prepared registered nurses to eighty percent in this country by two thousand twenty. We did not, if you could go back, Jen, please. We did not meet that goal. We're somewhere between whatever research you look at, forty-one to fifty percent of the nurses achieving a baccalaureate degree. So we have a little bit of a ways to go. And we certainly didn't increase the diverse nature of the registered nurse within the country. We still look at approximately ninety percent of the registered nurses being white females. Next slide, Jen, thanks. So what's the problem? Well, as you may know, we are four million strong in the country currently, but we will need thirteen million nurses to fill the global nursing shortage in the future. Again, I'll, I'll share that in a more specific number as we go forward, but thirteen million nurses will be needed to fill the gap. And specifically, minority nursing students face multiple barriers to success in getting into a baccalaureate program. Some of those include lack of financial support, inadequate emotional and moral support, insufficient academic advising, insufficient program mentoring, technical support and insufficient professional socialization. And none of this, none of this got better as a result of the current pandemic. As a matter of fact, in, in one study, sixty percent of the nurses said they're planning to leave their profession as a direct result of the impacts caused by COVID nineteen. Here, we benefited from nurses who risked their lives every day this past year to ensure that we were safe, that our families were safe. And yet, sixty percent of them, due to the stress of COVID, said we think it might be time for us to leave the profession. And so we have to ask ourselves, will we have a sufficient number of registered nurses in the workforce as we move forward? Next, Jen? Another problem is our nurses don't reflect the people that we serve. On the left side, you see the ethnicity of the current RN workforce in Pennsylvania. Seventy-five point three percent of them are white. Nine point nine percent of them are black African American. And eight point three percent of them are Asian. Four point eight percent of them are Hispanic and one point seven are other. And what does the ethnicity of Harrisburg, the community, look like? Well, forty-seven point three percent of them are black African American. Twenty-two percent are white. Five point four percent are Asian, sixteen point three percent are Hispanic and nine percent are other. So you can see we have great disparity among the RN workforce and the ethnicities of this community. You can move forward, Jen. But there's an opportunity for us to change this narrative. We know that registered nurses are listed among the top occupation in terms of job growth through two thousand twenty-nine. And this statistic is just outstanding and really should be remarkable for all of us. There will be one thousand seven, one hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred openings for registered nurses every year through two thousand twenty-nine, every year. That's an enormous amount of nurses that we are going to have to prepare when many times nursing programs only admit between thirty and forty or fifty students at most. And we also know that there's an opportunity for registered nurses to be offered high-paying rewarding careers in and near the student's hometown after graduation. Right now, the average PA registered nurse salary is about seventy-five thousand dollars. And most students either return to their hometown after graduation or will work in their hometown after graduation. And the other thing, oh, go ahead, that's fine, Jen. So what are we going to do? Well, we're going to hopefully educate students in grades nine through twelve who are interested in a professional career as a registered nurse. And not only that, but again, to diversify the population of nurses who will be working. One thing we know is that when the nursing workforce reflects its demographic, the communication improves and that makes patients feel more comfortable and we can better advocate for them at that time. It also bridges the gap between culture of medicine and the beliefs and practices that make up the patient's value systems. Nurses who understand their patients' cultures, environment, food, customs, culture and their religious views can provide the best and most optimal care for our patients. We're going to offer a multicultural curriculum with nursing content integration. We'll provide applied learning experiences, including these hands-on curriculums through our labs, practicums and summer employment in local healthcare settings. We'll provide students with complete industry-recognized certifications while they're in school in first aid, CPR and certified nursing assistance with an agreement through the Harrisburg Area Community College. We're also hoping to offer the CNA course to their parents free of charge through the same Harrisburg Area Community College. So who is our team? I think you've met some of them already. If you would permit me, I would just like to give just a brief overview about them. Dr. Peter Speaks, Esquire, as he's retired Pennsylvania state employee who served in state government for thirty years under four different governors and one senator. Mr. Speaks has been on our PNC, MC board since its inception. He recently retired as the deputy secretary for regulatory programs in September of two thousand eighteen and currently does a considerable amount of volunteer work with students throughout the Harrisburg community. Vanessa Cobb was not able to get on with us tonight, but she is an innovator and entrepreneur with forty-two years of experience in business and leadership. She is a visionary business developer with deep education and project manager. She is also the co-founder and CFO of APP Business Solutions, Inc. Dr. Christine Electney. Dr. Christine Electney was the previous chair of the Bloomsburg University School of Nursing for many years and has a rich history as a member of the Pennsylvania State Board of Nursing and has worked. and has worked with and been past president of the Pennsylvania State Nurses Association for almost five years and, and has a rich background in education and healthcare. Dr. Dread Scott. Again, I'm sorry that Dr. Dread Scott was unable to be here with us today as well. Lance Freeman. Lance is a retired HR director from the Harrisburg School District. Mr. Freeman worked for the Harrisburg School District for seventeen years and another five years as a consultant of the district. He has attended many charter school hearings as an employee of the Harrisburg School District and has a great understanding of this hearing process. Gloria Merrick, retired senior consultant in government. She is currently the Executive Director of the Latina Hispanic American Community Center of the Greater Harrisburg Region. She started in that position in August of 2011, and during her career, she served as senior consultant for twenty-five-plus organizations within the Pennsylvania public sector. Ms. Merrick has experience in the process of charter school approval with the Harrisburg School District and previously worked for the Department of Health, Special Assistant to the Deputy Administration, and the Governor's Office of Administration, as well as the Director of Leadership Development Institute for Women in State Government. Michael Miller is a partner in the Law Forum of Margolis and Edelstein. Mr. Miller focuses on employment and commercial litigation and represents a variety of clients in labor and employment law, civil rights liability, municipal law, education law, and general liability matters. And then finally, Corey Dupree. Currently, Corey is an alumni engagement coordinator at the Milton Hershey School and also an alum of the Milton Hershey School. Mr. Dupree is also the Chief Operating Officer of The Bridge Echo Village of the Greater Harrisburg Area, which is a real estate development company focused on community development. Mr. Dupree possesses community engagement experience and has personally experienced the STEAM educational model through his years as a student at Milton Hershey School. Thank you to all the members of our board. And now I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Deanna Myers. Again, Dr. Deanna Myers is the Executive Director of the Pennsylvania ASCD. Deanna?
Good evening. I just thought I'd share a few sample curriculum that talks to some of the core principles that Betsy has discussed in the prior part of the presentation. We talk a lot about personalization and individualization in the application, and I wanted to give you some explicit examples of that and integration of the nursing and medical things. So the first one is, this is just a simple, you have these and you're in the application, but this is a simple example of one of the ELA units that we have in here where we've done a content or context personalization, but we're still teaching the content tied to, to the assessment anchors and the Keystone literature. But we're using texts such as this Clara Burton text, Barton text, sorry, forgive me, Betsy, to, to, to connect the, and integrate the content or the context of nursing to those same standards that we need to develop in our learners to be, be strong literary readers and consumers of information. This is one example of, of that type of integration or personalization we have there. If you can move forward. Here's an example of where we're bringing in what would generally be an elective-type course, but it's tied directly to the nursing track and focus of this school. So this one is understanding body movements and goes a little deeper than, than a typical anatomy and physiology course that you might see in a high school and points directly to the nursing practices from that. So this is a content when so, whereas other kids may be choosing other electives or going to a higher course in a different arm of science. We're specifically using things like anatomy and physiology as a deeper connection for the nursing field. Move on to the next one. Here's what we're bringing in, yoga and tying it to various reading and writing ELA content areas along with the physical education requirements. Tying it to the social-emotional piece that Betsy talked about earlier is supporting nurses and the stress of the field and giving kids those, I shouldn't say kids, learners, those skills to be able to cope with the, the nurse, the stresses that come with the nursing profession. So you see, I just wanted to give you a few samples of where we have hit those core principles that, that we've talked about, and you can find many other like that throughout the curriculum. Thanks, Betsy.
Thank you, Dr. Myers. And now, let me please introduce Jessie Bean. Jessie joins us from the Charter Choices, a business service provider that has been providing back office accounting support to charter schools and PA since 2004. Charter Choices assisted in the preparation of our school budget and will proudly serve as its business manager. Jessie?
Thank you, Betsy, and good evening again, board members and guests. So I just want to highlight a few things on the budget. The revised budget was submitted with the application back in March and is based on the budget template provided by the district that aligns to the Pennsylvania Charter of Accounts, meets all the legal requirements in Pennsylvania. There are four things that I think are specific to this school's budget that are unique, and I want to emphasize, and they are, number one, that it truly prioritizes and emphasizes student learning and student support. Number two, that it makes a significant investment in healthcare STEM and innovation. Number three, that it prioritizes offering competitive benefits and, and salary to its teachers and employees. And then fourth, that it takes what I would characterize as a conservative approach to its own growth and sustainability over time. So on that first point, the prioritization of student learning and support, want to emphasize that only about ten percent, in fact, slightly under ten percent of the total budget of the school is administrative salaries and costs. The other ninety-plus percent is a combination of instructional costs, operational costs that support instruction, and over fifty percent of the budget, which is directly mapped to student support costs, wraparound services, mental and physical health, and in-kind services provided by some of the healthcare partners that Betsy identified just moments ago. There are specific items that I think are, are worth noting, like a full-time social worker and counselor in year one. Those positions are actually escalated in some of the out years on the budget as the school grows. You've got multiple social workers and counselors to support students and meet some of the needs that Betsy identified, and then small class size, something that we all know is important in achieving the kind of outcomes that the school hopes to achieve for its students. The second is that innovation piece around healthcare and STEM. So a full-time employee to manage the internships that secondary students will be undertaking, one-to-one laptops for all students, state-of-the-art laboratory medical training classrooms, which the facility that they're planning on utilizing is already sort of set up for that, that medical training, and the school plans to invest in the technology to fully outfit those classrooms. You can move on to the next slide, please. The third piece, which I mentioned, is that the salaries being offered to teachers are based on salary averages and publicly available numbers for Harrisburg, Harrisburg's own teachers in the district. And the school is, at least in the, the budget modeling that we've done, we're assuming healthy increases to those salaries, so five percent annual increases on salary for teachers. The competitive benefits package kind of starts out with a year-one light version that then grows as the school has the resources and revenues to support it. So employees are all covered in years one and two, and then eventually families starting in year three are covered as well. The school also intends to offer an increasingly generous four or three B plan as an alternative to the Peasars model that starts with a three percent employer contribution, but eventually grows in a year four to seven and a half percent. And then the last one that I wanted to highlight, which is that conservative approach to its long-term budget plan, is the school is starting small with just a hundred and twenty kids, eventually grows to four hundred students. And by virtue of adding a grade a year with a dynamic staffing model that allows for that growth, we're also taking into account the short-term impact of the pandemic on charter tuition rates. There will inevitably be a flattening or perhaps even a decrease in those rates in the short term, but we're assuming very modest increases that are actually well below statewide averages for the last twenty years. So never want to count your chickens before they hatch. So the idea here is to really assume that the school will see that short-term adverse impact and then really have very modest growth in rates. And then finally, it's important that the school takes a, a responsible, publicly responsible approach to its fund balance. So, you know, break even is typically the norm for year one of a new charter, and that's certainly the case here. But they really, those fund balances don't annually tally any more than five, six, approaching seven percent. So, you know, we, we looked at the original budget model, took the feedback on the size of that fund balance and really right-sized it to ensure that those public dollars were being used effectively to address the learning outcomes that the school will be promising to the community to deliver on. So that's just a, a quick snapshot of the budget approach for the school, and I'll hand it back to you, Betsy.
Thank you, Jessie. Thank you for that review. Again, here's a list of some of our community support and strategic alliances. You, I've seen some of these before, but we checked back with these folks. We added a couple, The Bridge. We added the Interdominational Ministry Ministers Conference of the Greater Harrisburg Region. And, and again, I got another call from Messiah College today asking, when are we going to be able to work together to achieve this charter school? So lots of folks are continuing to get back to us and, and asking us about how things are going with this school itself. So I'd like to, I'd like to really change the dialogue here to all working to march in this, in this particular case, march in the same direction. So, so go on to the next slide, please, Jen. So I looked, took a look at your mission, vision, core values that you're looking to achieve at Harrisburg School District, and, and they, they, they match our vision, mission, and beliefs as well. And so one of the things that you discuss is empowering students to succeed. We have the same belief, vision, and mission is to empower students to succeed in achieving a baccalaureate degree in nursing. We know there's a shortage. We can't deny it anymore. We know that COVID hasn't made it any better. In fact, it's made it worse. And we need a pipeline of nurses to care for you, me, our families in the future. If we don't prepare ahead of time, we are going to be left with a huge hole of nurses. Some say one point one million lacking nurses we won't have in the pipeline to care for our families. And this is a huge problem. So we both have that same value, right, to empower students to succeed. Achieve academic excellence. Again, this is part of your vision, mission, and core values as well, and, and for us as well. We would love to see them achieve this academic excellence, that they can get to a point where they can successfully move into a baccalaureate program. To foster collaboration and effort. And even, I, I would even say, i-if not collaboration, cooperation. Let's try to come together and foster this collaboration and effort. I think it's a new day for the Harrisburg School District, and we want to be a part of that new day as well. We want to engage in that effort with you, not in competition, but in cooperation with you. And then finally, you, you mentioned this, seek inspired opportunities. And I believe this is one of those inspired opportu, opportunities. And so if you'll forgive me, I came up with a plan for this inspired opportunity that I'd like to present to you. Next slide, Jen. Because I believe we can work together. And so this is the plan for both the school district and the Pennsylvania Nurses Middle College to work together. Let's focus on one unifying purpose. For example, by building an innovative, leading-edge school district where the two schools come together, where we can maximize positive change and transcend these barriers. Let's acknowledge, address, and overcome the past barriers. Let's acknowledge them, let's address them, and then let's move forward. Let's take on the characteristics of partners. Let us be the first school district that works with a charter school that says, we're going to be partners. We're going to respect each other's experiences, respect each other's skills and perspectives, and be involved in this collaboration or cooperation together. Let's build strong, reform-minded leadership between PNMC and this Harrisburg School District. Let's seek a boundary spanner and some cross-sector task forces that we can put together and say, how can we work this out together? How can we become that inspired school district? One that's an innovator, one who comes up with new solutions. And how can we be a role model for other schools and districts and charter schools to move their schools forward? And do it for the, do it for our students so that our students can succeed. If that's truly what our vision and mission is, then we have to walk the talk, to walk the talk and talk the walk because we've got to do it together. And I say we should set an agenda and a timeline for a systematic development and execution of a pilot collaborative initiative between PNMC and the Harrisburg School District. This would truly be innovative. We would truly be meeting our visions and missions if we did in fact do this. So this is the plan I have moving forward, but don't take my word for it. I want you to hear from a person who would have benefited from a school like ours and had been able to transcend the barriers and the circuitous route she had to go to to find her way into nursing. Jen?
Good evening. I am Karen, and I'm a nurse. Currently, I am in the process of
I'm sorry, can you speak, I'm sorry, ma'am, could you speak a little louder if you could possibly? I'm sorry.
This is recorded, so we're going to try to
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that.
For you. That's okay.
My fault. Go ahead. Thank you.
All right, Betsy, I did click that box, so if it's not, individuals may have to turn up their own computer.
Yeah, you might, let's have you all turn up your computer a little bit. We did do what they asked as far as making it louder, but she is a very soft-spoken woman.
That's why.
We'll start again.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Karen, and I'm a nurse. Currently, I am in the process of becoming a nurse scholar, scientist, and researcher, which blows my mind because that is not where I envisioned myself being twenty-seven years ago. When I grew up as a child, I never saw nurses elevated in leadership roles beyond the bedside as well as the community.
Oh, boy. I'm, I'm having trouble there. I'm sorry.
We can send you a recording, Tom.
Great, thank you. I'll, I'll still do my, go ahead. Thanks.
Oh, Jen, go ahead, back and let's
administrators, case managers, working with managed care. And so I pivoted and began my own journey, became a nurse, and have been working in the field for about sixteen years now. But my question, however, is, for the future nurses, would they also need to do such a circuitous process to become a nurse when our world is in dire need of well-invested, prepared nurses sooner than later in their career development?
There are so many other stories like Karen's, and I'm sorry that the, the sound wasn't so good, but there are many other stories like Karen's. And we want to make sure that students like Karen have a clear path forward and the support that they need to succeed as a registered nurse.
Excuse me, Betsy, your time is up. I'm sorry.
That, that was the ending, so thank you very much.
Ms. Nook, were you done? Because you can finish up if you are, had anything.
Ms. Snook, were you done? Because you can finish up if you are, had anything you wanted to say.
No, that was it. Thank you very much.
Okay. And thank you, Ms. Anderson, for keeping the time for me. Appreciate that. All right. Thank you, everyone, for the presentation. I think that was very informative. I know that the district has asked for the PowerPoint slide deck to be included as part of the record. I think there, in particular, there were some examples that were provided from, from Deanna. Ms. Mayers, excuse me. And I think it would be helpful to have that information. So if either Ms. Snook, if you could send that to Mr. Selmer or Mr. Morford, if you could send the deck to me, then we will mark that as exhibit number four and include that as part of the record.
Okay.
Great. And, and that can be emailed to either Mr. Selmer or to me after the hearing.
Will do.
All right. We're now going to turn to the point of the evening when there will be some questions presented to the applicant. Before we start, I'm going to ask Mr. Corcoran to swear in the group of people who would be responding to the questions. Given the sheer number of people, the easiest way to do this might be for you to represent to us if there's anyone who would be responding, who wasn't already included in the introduction of the group? Or if there's anyone that should be excluded as part of the, the swearing in, who would not be providing information in response to the questions.
Ms. Glory Merrick will not be responding, but all others have the opportunity to respond, Ms. Peterson.
Okay. So everyone who had previously identified themselves as being part of the applicant group, we are going to jointly swear you in with the exception of Ms. Merrick. So when Mr. Corcoran tells you, you'll raise your hand and you'll, you will affirm or swear as you see fit in response to the oath.
Thank you. Okay. Does everyone swear, affirm, the testimony they give will be the truth, the whole truth or nothing but, and nothing but the truth? So have you got, or so do you affirm?
I guess. Yes.
Yes.
And is there, and is there anyone who had previously been identified other than Ms. Merrick who did not swear or affirm? Hearing no one, we'll let the record reflect that everyone swore or affirmed. I see a hand up from Mr. Williams on the Zoom and I just want to make sure there's nothing that we need to address at this point in time. Mr. Williams, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Okay, I can go.
Mr. Williams, what's your question?
Sorry. Yeah, I just was curious to know, you know, for a school district that is well known to pay a disproportionate amount of funds and charters, how was it arrived at? You know, how did, how was the decision to try and mitigate the racial inequities in nursing? How was it arrived that it charged school with that solution?
I'm sorry, could someone repeat that question?
Ms. Mr. Williams, can you get closer to your microphone?
Yeah, sorry. How was it decided that a charter school for nursing was the solution to the racial inequities in the nursing profession? Especially for Harrisburg School District that already pays a disproportionate amount of funds for charter schools compared to other school districts?
So Mr. Stevens, I, I, I'm sorry, I guess I'm slightly confused on the question. The reason that we were concerned about the inequity in the diversity within the profession was because of the numbers that were given to us by the Institute of Medicine report of 2010, where it was stated that 91% of our nursing workforce were white female. And again, we looked at the communities and they didn't look similar to our profession. And so it was recommended through that body that we begin to look at increasing the diversity within this profession. And, and one of the ways that we felt to do, we were, we would be able to do that would be through the, through this school. And, and, and that's simply because we know that there are challenges for minority students when they try to go to, into a profession such as nursing. One of the, one of the challenges to get into the Black Gloria Prepared Nursing Program is that you have to have at least a 3.0 GPA. And sometimes that's a struggle for students of, of different ethnic backgrounds. And, and I said it for the, for the reasons that I included in the presentation. Again, sometimes it's insufficient academic advising. Sometimes it's a lack of program mentoring or technical supports, problems with financial support, inadequate emotional and, and moral support in some cases. So these are, are just a few of the barriers for some of the minority students to get into nursing programs. And that affects their academic progress. And so we are hoping to mitigate some of that through the use of our case managers and our social workers.
Ms. Stuck, I'm going to kind of buttress on what Mr. Williams asked you. And this also addresses some of the comments that you made during the presentation. What made the applicant seek to apply under a charter school model as opposed to approaching the district to see if there was some other avenue to maybe create a partnership as you had referenced? Or, you know, remove the, the boundary, I think you were to use the boundary spanner. What, why, why the charter road to become a charter school as opposed to, to seek some other type of partnership with the district to kind of reach the same end, but through a different mechanism?
Yeah. You know, I, I think part of it was, this is some very specific curriculum, right? It's, it's very much integrated. And so it's integrated in all parts of the curriculum, not just, it's not just, well, we're going to take an extra medical assistant class or we're going to take some, an, an extra class in this. This is really integrated throughout the entire curriculum. So the student starts in ninth grade and we just not only integrate the curriculum, but we integrate the behaviors, the professional behaviors that are required for someone to enter into, into a baccalaureate program. So it's really getting this, it's really setting them into a place where they are literally surrounded by this, the, the idea of professional socialization as well as academic excellence in, in the profession.
Then in terms
Certainly it wasn't, it wasn't. And it wasn't a, an obvious decision not to do that. It was just, this was the idea for the, the charter school.
Again, addressing what you had referenced in the presentation. And I also believe there is a statement in the application on page 29 about forming a district slash charter collaborative pilot. What, what specifically are you talking about there? Can you provide some examples?
Sure. I mean, I, I think what we were looking at is certainly for professional learning. I think that both our, our teachers and yours could benefit from some different, you know, ways to teach and strategies that we could be using. I also think that, you know, it's an opportunity for, for teachers to cross teach in different places, you know, see what others are doing. I think there's lots of opportunity for us to, to sort of cross train, if you will, different, different, our, our teachers. Maybe some of our, our students get an opportunity to do that as well. But I honestly believe that there should be a way that we can work together. And I don't have all the answers here, which is why I said to you that it would be important to have a task force and a pilot program. But I, I think we shouldn't lose sight of an opportunity to work together. And that's the more important issue here where, you know, if we're all going to say that we want to do something innovative and new and, and to ensure that our students succeed, then, then it becomes incumbent upon us to talk about the barriers we've had in the past and how we can work together to eliminate those barriers if possible.
Now, let's talk more, more specifics. I understand that you are slated to be the proposed executive director of the charter school. Should a charter be received? Is that accurate?
Yes.
And would you continue in your role as the executive director of the Pennsylvania State Nurses Association as well?
No.
Do you have any experience running a school?
No, I don't have any experience running a school.
Do you hold any certifications in Pennsylvania?
You mean other than like nursing certifications?
Correct.
Not hold any teacher certifications, no.
So are there any other employees who have been identi, or excuse me, strike that. Are there any other prospective employees that have been identified for the charter school?
Like the principal, those people, teachers, social workers, case managers? It's all in the, in the narrative, the list of, of people that we would employ.
Understood. My question is more specific to, has anyone been identified to serve in those positions?
No, not at this time.
And so that would also include the person, the, the position you said as the principal or the instructional leader? There, there's not been anyone identified for that position?
No, not at this time.
The school is proposing to open in the, for the 2022-2023 school year. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay. There were several different timetables throughout the application itself, some of which reflected a start date of 2022, 2023. Others reflected a start date of the prior year, which would be 2021-2022. If those tables are in there, are, are the ones that say with a start date of 2021 inaccurate?
Yes.
And is it correct that the charter school would open in the first year with ninth grade only? Is that correct? And 100, are you aiming for 129th graders?
That, that's what we would be aiming for, yes.
There was some tables that identified the proposed enrollment in each year and the grade structure. And it looked like in the second year, you would continue with the 129th graders. That would then be 10th graders, but then only add 80 9th graders in year two. Is that the plan?
Correct.
What accounts for the, the rationale for the lower number of 9th graders in year two compared to year one?
Well, we were really just trying to stay at 100 per, per year. But then when we went through the budget, we thought that it might be best to start with 120. I, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that that number will, we will get to that number, but those are just the numbers that we proposed.
So when you say you're not sure you'll get to that number, you mean that you'd have 120 students in year one?
Correct.
How many students would you need to enroll in year one to make the school financially viable?
I'll have to direct that question to Jesse or to Margie.
So I would, I think the simplest way to answer that question, Ms. Peterson, is if we look at the, if you look at the five year budget, year one is essentially break even. It's, you know, you're showing a a net change in fund balance of $131. So you're, so I would say you'd need every one of those 120 students in order to be solvent in year one.
And my apologies if we jump around a little bit as we go through the questions. Mr. Bean, in your comments in the opening presentation, you had mentioned that the charter school had used a revised budget template provided by the school district in preparing the documents. I just want to make sure we're clear because the district did not, does not have its own charter application.
Okay.
I just want to make sure, sure the record is clear about that. Do you know where the budget template came from that was used?
I don't. I would have to defer to Betsy on that question. We, so I know that charter choices, we have our own budget planning template that we often use. And this one was new to me. So my, my apologies, I assumed that it was provided by the district. But perhaps the applicant had another source.
Yeah, we actually, Margie, is Margie still on?
Here.
Yeah, we used the, the template that we use when we budget. Is that correct, Margie? That's the one we used.
It's one that we started out with the first time we applied. It wasn't, you, you didn't supply it. It was supplied by another consultant.
And just when you say you, the school district didn't supply it, is that? Okay. I just want to make sure the record is clear so that there's no misunderstanding.
No.
Because the, there, there is not an approved application template that the school district has adopted.
No, we, one of us, and we revised that one and sent you a revision in.
I'm sorry, Margie, you just start your answer again. I didn't hear your first part.
I said that the, the, but the plan, the budget plan that we, template that we use was supplied by a consultant.
Thank you.
And then just, and thank you for that clarity for, to everyone. That, just staying on the budget then, Mr. Bean, you had mentioned in the, your part of the presentation, information about the healthcare coverage that the charter school would be offering. And I want to make sure I heard you correctly. Did you say that in years one and two, the charter school would only be offering single coverage to its employees?
That's correct. Years one and two would cover the individual only. And in year three, that coverage would be extended to all dependents. So it'd be family coverage.
And then the retirement information that you provided, is it correct that the charter school does not intend to allow its employees to participate in the public school employees retirement system, otherwise known as PISers?
That's correct. The school will be establishing a 403B PISers alternative plan.
And what is the contribution rate for the employer in each year of the requested five year charter?
So the employer contribution is 3% in years one and two. That increases to 5% in year three and then seven and a half percent in year four and thereafter.
Thank you. Let's switch to the facility. The supplemental materials indicated that the Midtown Two Building located at 1500 North Third Street in Harrisburg is the proposed site for the charter school. Is this, is that accurate?
Yes.
And what other tenants would be in that property?
The STEAM school, the STEAM charter school.
The Pennsylvania STEAM charter school.
Yes, ma'am.
And can you provide information to the district with respect to how each tenant would inhabit the building?
I'll refer to Doug Knightig for that. Doug?
Sure. We've done layouts of the building to identify individual spaces for the PA STEAM Academy as well as the Nurses Middle College. Those spaces would be uniquely identified to each tenant. We will put demising walls up in the building so that each tenant's space will be separate. Each will have its own secured entrances and exits. And the facilities support the use, the anticipated use of both schools over the longer term.
So again, to help the district understand where So again, to help the district understand where within the buildings each school would be functioning, can you describe what, where in the floor plan or which floors PA STEAM would be occupying versus PA nurses, should PA nurses receive a charter?
I sure can, so the, under the current plan, the PA STEAM Academy would use the primary, over the longer term, use the front entrance, the Riley Street entrance of the building. There are other auxiliary entrances, but that would be the primary entrance for the STEAM Academy. The Nurses Middle College would use what we call the atrium entrance, the glass atrium entrance on Third Street, about two-thirds of the way up the block. That, the building is 130,000 total square feet, it takes up that entire city block. And there are actually what could be used as three primary entrances, main entrances to the building. The STEAM Academy will use Riley Street, the Nurses Middle College will use the Third Street atrium entrance.
And then in terms of where the classroom space would be for each of the entities, can you please describe that for the for the district?
Sure can, for the Nurses Middle College, the roughly speaking, the 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 north or the back, one-third of the first floor would be used by the Nurses Middle College. The basement, lower low, lower level space underneath that north end of the building would also be used by the Nurses Middle College. The Pennsylvania STEAM Academy would use the south end of the lower level, would use the front, south end of the first floor, would use the entire second floor and the entire third floor over time as it expands.
And is that what was originally contemplated by the applicant when the application was submitted?
Yes.
The letter from Green Works, when I know you, Mr. Knightig, signed the letter, had indicated that the nurses would initially lease 12,000 square feet in the building, expanding to 40,000 square feet over several years. And then there were rental rates that were included for square footage on the first and second floor space as well as the lower level space. Does that indicate that over time, there's going to be an expansion by the nurses into larger portions of the first and second floor of the building?
Actually, the current plan has the Nurses Middle College expanding onto a fairly good-sized amount of the first floor and the lower level space on the north end of the building.
And in terms of the rental amounts that you're anticipating would be spent for the first year of operations, based on the square footage rates that are in the letter of April 23rd, 2021, how much is the proposed rent for year one?
Year one would be 1985 per square foot times the 12,000 square feet that are required.
Would there be any portion of the $11.91 square footage charge for the lower level space that would also be needed in that first year?
No, for the first year, the plan is to put the Nurses Middle College exclusively on the first floor and then expand onto the lower level in subsequent years.
Do you have estimates for what the square footage would be in the subsequent years?
I've I've done my planning based on a linear expansion, fairly linear expansion year on year from the 12,000 square feet to the 40,000. So it's going to be fairly linear. The the trick's going to be deciding exactly when the Nurses Middle College is going to want to expand to the lower level, because that will obviously affect the lease rate for that period of time.
And how much square footage does the applicant believe it would need for years two through five?
I'm looking at it as relatively linear, so 12,000 square feet would turn into about 20,000, would turn then into 30,000, would turn into 40,000. That's the planning that we've done.
And then 40,000 would remain the same from year forty or five because you're not increasing the number of kids?
30,000 in my understanding is the maximum amount of space that the Nurses Middle College would require in the building.
And the letter dated April 23rd, 2021 says that, quote, "The rental rate includes all expenses, but in-suite janitorial telephone and internet services," end quote.
That's correct.
So that is correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
And that means, and again, just so the record is is clear and we have an understanding, that would mean that the charter school is not paying any of the utility costs for the space, that those are rolled into the the rental rate?
That's correct. Utility taxes, insurance, all other building expenses are included in that gross rent.
What about trash removal?
Trash removal is included, water, sewer.
Ms. Snook in group, can you, let's talk about the curriculum and what's included in Appendix A. Who who prepared the documents that are in Appendix A?
Myself and Dr. Myers.
Actually, it's a little larger group than that, just to to clarify, Betsy. So we had a group of administrators that were highly qualified, it from Pennsylvania ASCD had a hand in that. Also, Betsy, I believe that
Dr. Elekney?
Yes, I'm going to get your name, last name wrong, so I don't want to get it wrong.
You have to slow down a little bit because I'm having a hard time understanding, and I think Mr. Porcarin is as well.
The doctor, I I'm looking for her name up there, I can't.
Dr. Elekney.
I I heard that name, right, and then I thought you said another doctor.
Dr. Myers.
Oh, and that, right, okay, I got that, okay. Go ahead.
So Chris, I cannot pronounce your last name, so I don't want to get it wrong for the record.
Dr. Elekney.
Thank you, Chris. Being that she has worked so long with with Bloomsburg School District or School District, Bloomsburg University in the nursing, she played a really big role in looking at the science curriculum particularly to make sure that that our students would be successful moving into an a baccalaureate nursing program coming out of this charter school. So I believe we also had a few others work on, of course, work on this project.
Yes, we had Dr. Deb Cardenas with the Hershey Medical Center, who helped us write some of the medical courses, the nursing and medical courses as well, as well as a Dr. Din, well, Dinina, I don't remember Dinina's last name, but she helped us with the yoga and and activities related to the yoga.
Okay, and is it Mayers or Myers?
It is Mayers.
Mayers, I don't want to mispronounce your name. Ms. Mayers, are you, what is your, the group that you are with?
I serve as the executive director for Pennsylvania ASCD, we're a state affiliate of ASCD. Most of the administrators in the room are probably familiar with us.
Okay, and you have a background in curriculum development?
Yes.
And at what, when were you brought in to provide curriculum services to the applicant?
Not the exact hiring date of this or the consulting contract.
It was probably last spring, I would imagine, Deanna.
That sounds about right, yeah.
Last spring or even the December or November before that, it might have been November, December of 2019.
There in did you, strike that, I'm sorry, there was a copyright date in one of the curriculum courses, I believe it was the Health Foundations One course. And there was a copyright associated with the Faria, F-A-R-I-A, Education Group. Can you identify what, who that is or what that is?
Sure, the Faria Education Group is actually a group that owns the the technology tool Rubicon Atlas. And Rubicon Atlas is a curriculum mapping software. We use that software to map out the entire curriculum so that we could do both horizontal and vertical analysis to make sure that we didn't have any gaps in standards across the the courses. It's a curriculum mapping tool.
So they they own the technology, they, but they didn't put the content in?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Who prepared the the curriculum for the Health Foundations One course?
So it was a combination, we used, because they're going to be a blended learning type of facility, we are using some electronic or online resources. So there's e-dynamics and accelerate education are some of the foundations of which the curriculum has started with. But just like any good educators, we weren't happy with exactly how a publisher created it. So we took that in and I'm going to miss your name again, Chris. I can, Chris, Elekney, Elekney. And the others that Betsy talked about then examined that and made it edits and extra additional resources and supplemental. And of course, once the teachers are hired and the experts in the fields from that will will be highly qualified, they will also have the ability to edit that curriculum and to make adjustments based on the learners that are in front of them, because we would not want them to do a one-size-fits-all curriculum for the different learners that they might have in their classrooms.
Right. There, on page seven of the application, there is a table, it's table one with the different course requirements stated there leading to graduation credit requirements of 26 total credits. There is a reference to career education and work with a value of 0.5 total units. What course is that?
Have to give me a chance to look at that one, it's been a little while since I, Betsy, do you have that?
Yeah, I I see it, but I I don't.
Health, health careers or health.
Yeah, it might be the health careers course, I don't have that one in front of me.
Careers course in there, I'll pull it, but I do need a second to to find that exactly because I don't want to get it wrong. Should have had the course catalog open.
When you say a course catalog, is that something that's been provided to the district?
Since I wasn't involved in putting the application together, I'll defer that question to to Betsy or others. We do have, we did create a course catalog.
I do believe we did create a course catalog, Jen, is that something you're able to look up while you have the application open?
Is this what you're referring to, Betsy?
No, that's just one of the curriculum maps.
Yeah, that's just a map, it would be the catalog of coursework, courses.
I'm sorry, who was, now who was talking there, I didn't see the, that you, Ms. Mayers or Deanna? Was that you that just said that, I, I don't know who just talked, I didn't see the.
Jen was saying, she asked me if that was the right document, and I, Betsy Snook, said no.
And I just ask people not to share screens at this point because we are just trying to make sure we're one, we can hear everybody and when we share screens, people disappear. So we're trying to, I guess the question right now, there's, there was two questions posed. One was Ms. Mayers was determining what the specific course was that satisfied the career education and work total unit. And then the second question was, was the course catalog that was referenced included in the application?
I I'll have to get back to you on that, Ms. Peterson, I I believe it was, but again, I have 3,000 pages here or more, and I'd have to go, I'd have to go through it again.
Okay.
I believe we did create a course catalog, but I would have to go back and and check on that for you.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at right now, so I'll do, maybe as an appendix if if we did not. So I believe they were going to allow a choice between the Introduction to Nursing or the Health Science Foundation which both have a workforce and meet the trying to look you to find you, meet the, the 0.5 for career and education workforce standards.
Okay, there, further on that, in that table one, there is a line for nursing-focused electives with a total unit value of 4.0. What electives are included in that descriptor?
I believe the one is medical terminology, correct me if I'm wrong, Deanna, medical terminology.
I can read them, they also have. Betsy, would you give me the answer?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Deanna. So some of the medical electives of choice would be Introduction to Nursing, Health Science to Patient Care and Medical Services, Medical Terminology, Medical Diagnostic Technology, and then other electives into Psychology, Sociology. And then other additional electives would be those that could be from our partners in our higher ed partnerships.
And when would students begin being able to take nursing-focused electives?
The plan was, starting at a minimum, their sophomore year.
And when you say the plan was, has the plan changed?
No. No.
Is there a description in the application of all of the different elective opportunities that the applicant is is anticipating at this point in time? Is there that description in the document?
Yes, that I know of, description of medical terminology, Health Foundations One and Two, is that what you're referring to, Ms. Peterson?
I'm, well, I'm referring to you, you listed a whole host of different electives.
Yes.
In response, and I think it's, there is, underneath the table, there's a reference to Health Foundations One, Health Foundations Two, but then there are general descriptions to medical electives or general electives. So I think we're trying to understand what other or or what specific opportunities and electives students would be able to have. And and I don't know if it's stated here, so I'm I'm trying to find out if it's stated anywhere to your knowledge.
But we would have a course description for medical terminology and for nursing foundations and Health Foundations One and Health Foundations Two.
So this is Dr. Mayers, again, I I believe that it is the the course catalog, you will find all of those descriptions. If it wasn't made available in the application, I think you should. If it wasn't made available in the application, I think you should send that as an, as a new exhibit.
I believe it is though.
Well, so, so that, this is why we establish a supplement deadline to make sure that everybody has the documents in a timely way and has time to review them as we're going through this process. So the procedures that are pursuant to the board adopted policy are the procedures. So I want to make sure that based on what we already have, that we're not overlooking something, or if you could point us to what we already have, that would help, that, that's the purpose of what, of this endeavor and what we're trying to ascertain.
This is Mark, this is Marki Erby. I believe appendix A has the course offerings and their descriptions, which includes the health foundations, one, the medical terminology, probability statistics, all of the courses that are going to be offered.
So you're looking at page 79 of the application and that has appendix A course offerings. And then there are 18 offerings that are listed there specifically.
Yes.
Which of those offerings would be included in the nursing focus elective offerings?
So I would imagine all of those are nursing focused, but again, we've, we've put nursing, we've, we've infiltrated the entire curriculum with nursing principles, ideas, policies. I mean, all of it's been, all of it has been incorporated into the curriculum. So, but those specific courses, if you're asking, and if you need to know which specific courses would be considered nursing, we certainly can identify that for you at, at a later date, if that's what you need.
Well, I we're trying to understand now, obviously you have courses here, algebra one, American history. Understand your, your response to the question as having, there may be nursing concepts integrated throughout some of those courses. I understand that. The question was specific to the nursing electives that are referenced on page seven. Which of the 18 courses that are listed here as being in appendix A would fall into the category of nursing focused electives?
And is that what, what's on page 79 that you were just referencing?
Yes, that Ms. Erby referenced as well.
Thank you. So I would say that would be medical terminology, health foundations one and two. And I, I think that would be it.
So you said health foundations one and two, the number 13 on page 79 says health foundations one. Is there curriculum that's provided for the, a second course of health foundations two?
There is.
And is that all found within the health foundations one section?
I can't be sure of that right now, but I know it is something that we discussed as health foundations two as a, as a, as a second course to augment health foundations one.
And my, the question is, is there actual curriculum for health foundations two found in appendix A?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, and where is that located?
Who answered? Yes. Was that you, Deanna?
Yeah.
I think it's part, I think it's part of Deanna that the, the coursework that will be using through, what's the name of that program? Accelerate. They have some of those programs that we had looked at that we were going to use for health foundations one and two. Is that correct?
Correct, that, that along with e-dynamics. I unfortunately don't have the, I'm sorry, Allison.
Go, I didn't mean to cut you off. I'm sorry.
I unfortunately don't have the exact application in front of me, so if, if someone from the nursing can, can send it to me, I can give you the exact pages. I just have the curriculum that we worked on.
What do you need? What do you need, Deanna?
Email me the application.
Jen, Jennifer Nightig, would you please do that?
And I can tell you exactly where it is, Allison.
And just so everyone knows, before the hearing began tonight, I did send your counsel the bait stamped version of the application distribution to everyone so that we could all be operating off of the same document. So if we can't get that now for the next hearing, we should definitely have that available. Are you working on getting that, access to that now?
This is Jennifer. I am working on it. It's a big file, so I'm sending it.
So in the interest of time, we'll keep going, but I've made a note to myself to come back to that question at the end. There was a discussion in the application as well as in your presentation tonight about a potential partnership with colleges or post-secondary educational institutions about the offering of college course credit to students who would attend the charter school. Has the applicant made any partnerships or arrangements with any post-secondary education institutions, excuse me, for that opportunity?
Post-secondary colleges and universities obviously are interested in partnering with us. They obviously don't want to partner with someone who hasn't gotten an application approved at this point in time. But yes, we have spoken to numerous organizations that are interested. We've spoken with Messiah College, Penn State, Harrisburg University. Eastern University contacted us as well. It's not unusual for colleges and universities when they hear of a program such as this and, and what we've seen with the school that's similar to this up in Rhode Island, is that soon other colleges and universities will want to partner with a school of a similar nature that has prepared students to the best of their abilities to be able to enter into baccalaureate programs. So that's usually what happens when a school such as this gets approved and begins educating the students.
Has the applicant entered into any memorandum of understanding or any other type of agreement with any post-secondary institution?
Not at this time, just Harrisburg Area Community College for the nurse aid course.
And, and let me ask you about that. How, what is, what is the planning for the, for the certified nurse aid certification? When would, is there multiple courses that would need to be taken to obtain that certification? How does that work?
Well, normally it's a 40-hour week to get the certification. So we would just incorporate it into their ninth, or excuse me, their 11th and 12th grade curriculum. But for the parents who would attend the school, I believe it's just a 40-hour class that they would take over. I don't know if they take it over a week or a two-week period.
Is the, the CNA certification, the certified nurse aid certification, part of the credit requirements and the credit units that are included on page seven in the table?
I don't know that we did include it there. I, I can't answer that fully for you.
Would it be, would, would the, the CNA certification be obtained as part of the course requirements for any particular course?
No, it would just strictly be part of, it, it would be the CNA course that comes from Harrisburg Area Community College, since they'll be providing the certification.
And would students earn credit from the charter school towards graduation as a result of being enrolled in that CNA course?
Not that we've discussed. Certainly could be a possibility. It's just not something we've discussed at this time.
And would students have to, would there be a cost to students associated with the participation in the CNA certification program?
No.
Who would pay for that?
So that's the, that's the work of Paula Lasecki, our Director of Development, who was, we've had many a discussion with who will be finding those folks that are willing to support this effort for both the parents and the students.
So I want to make sure I understood your response. So are you saying the charter school would not be the funder for the costs associated with that program?
Correct.
But you're sitting here today, you, you don't know who would fund the costs for student or parent participation in the CNA certification program?
No, but I don't have any doubt that Paula will be able to make that happen.
So you're looking for support from third-party providers or, or third-party sources to fund those, those courses?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
The statements that are in the application about the opportunities for students to earn up to 12 college credits while they're enrolled at the charter school. Is that in addition to the CNA course that would be through the partnership with HACC?
Yes.
HACC, did you say?
H A C C, Harrisburg Area Community College.
Okay, thanks.
In terms of the, the nursing programs that you will be offering in the coursework, do you anticipate seeking approval from the Pennsylvania Department of Education to be a, a certified career in technical education provider?
No, not at this time. The intent is not for it to be a technical school. The intent is for it to be a school that prepares a student for a baccalaureate degree. That was the goal for the school was to prepare them to be baccalaureate prepared leaving the high school. We need baccalaureate prepared registered nurses, and so that's the goal.
And how does the completion of the CNA certificate fit within that goal?
Well, for, in a couple of ways. First of all, it gives, it gives students employment when they're, they'll get that course before they graduate from school. So they, it provides them some employment during summer breaks or during breaks in, for holidays. They may be able to get out to work and do, do those kinds of things. Also, it, it provides a pathway for those students who may not end up being able to pursue a baccalaureate degree. And so it provides those students with an alternate healthcare career. And one we need as much as we do registered nurses that are baccalaureate prepared.
The reference, excuse me, strike that, I'm sorry. There was a reference to charter choices being a provider that the charter school would utilize for business services as well as other services. Are there any other third-party providers that you anticipate the charter school contracting with or utilizing to provide operational services or other services for the charter school?
Yes, and I believe they're all in there in your appendices. We're looking at a food service group. We're looking at some E-rate IT services. So there, I believe they're all outlined in the application.
So there, there are no other vendors that you are anticipating using at this time that are not referenced in the application appendices?
Not that I know of at this time.
Just have a few more questions. I saw there was a reference to Mr. Dupree being an honorary board member. Can you just provide some clarity as to what it means to be an honorary board member?
Well, at this time, Mr. Dupree has his hands in quite a bit of business with the bridge and the Echo Village. And yet we wanted to offer him an opportunity to provide wisdom and direction, some marketing skills that he has working as he has. Oh, I'm sorry, Corey, did you want to answer that question?
I could go in gladly. You, you kind of got me off rocking and rolling on to the start. So as Ms. Stoker, I just mentioned me having my hands in, in a fair share of, of business ventures related to for-profit, nonprofit entities. Just being intentional with my time, knowing that I wanted to be involved to, to some degree, the best way that I can. So with that honorary board member comes with non-voting, quote unquote, privileges. And me understanding that and knowing everything that the team is doing to go, or excuse me, the board is doing to go and push this part, hopeful partnership and, and everything going forward, I just wanted to be as active as I could. And that, that's the best way to go and kind of explain that, if that answers that question.
Thank you. It doesn't, I didn't mean to put you on the spot like that, but I was just trying to get clarity of, to the difference between serving as a full board member versus an honorary member. There were other individuals who were identified as being part of the founding board for the charter school who are, who were not then listed as anticipated board members should a charter be received. Is that still accurate?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question? There were people who were what?
Sure, there were, there were individuals who were identified in the narrative as being part of the founding board for the charter school.
Yes.
Who were not then listed as part of the board resumes for people who would serve on the charter board should a charter be received.
Yes.
And I'm, go ahead.
That's correct.
Okay, now I'm just, I'm just simply trying to confirm that that is the expectation that those individuals, if they're not listed, would not serve on the charter board?
Correct.
There were also some community support documents that were submitted. How, how were those collected?
The community surveys?
Yes, yes, thank you.
In, in a variety of ways. Peters speaks. Would you like to speak to some of those?
Yes, they were collected by individual one-on-one meetings that we've had with organizations such as the Interdenominational Ministerium Conference, as one-on-one meetings and contacts with parents and other supporters of the middle college charter school.
And did everyone who filled out, strike that, is everyone whose name appears in the form, did they fill out their form themselves?
Yes, that's my understanding that they fill it out or either, you know, with some assistance if it was needed to, you know, fill out some of the forms and have them review it and sign it.
Who was, who was involved in the collection of the forms in terms of the actual face-to-face with the people whose names appear in the forms?
It would have been the individual board members.
There, if you look at pages 783 to 807, it appears that the handwriting to 807, it appears that the handwriting on the forms is similar for the different individuals who are identified there. So I guess my first question is, do you know who was involved in the collection of these particular surveys? Mr. Speaks, I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
No, I, I do not.
Yeah, my pages are not marked, so I'm.
Ms. Peterson, this is Finesse Cobb. I worked with Peter Speaks in the collection and the community outreach efforts that we had in getting the surveys introduced to the community and then signed. What we found is that we were, some of those were similar because I myself actually went out with our team sometime just to make sure they were doing the required COVID following COVID guidelines. But I also found out that going into the, particularly the minority communities, they were very reluctant to give out information. That was something that was a barrier. So they would tell me, I actually heard them and actually filled out. Some of those were duplicates of my, you know, I actually signed them, their information because they would tell me, well, if you do it and you're okay, we'll submit it. But many of them would not. So that's why you're finding that.
So, okay, so, and thank you. So let me just clarify my understanding what you just said. So are, did you sign some of the forms and fill out the information for individuals that appear in the submission for the community support?
Yes, for about three of them I did because those particular three did not have signature skills. And I think those were the Latina ones that I had that for. I can't, I don't have them in front of me. I don't know.
So in the, the circumstances you just stated, you signed for them?
Yes, I did. With their permission, there with them, yes.
There are other signatures or other information, I should say, that appears to be in the same hand, including the signatures for a, a larger number than just three of the individuals here. Can you, can you or anyone else explain why that would be?
I don't know about that. I can only attest to ones I had, but we had, you know, several surveyors who were out. I can only attest to mine.
There are two in particular that the address indicates that the individuals may have lived in a shelter. And I'm only, I'm only asking that to see if it jogs a memory.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. Because, you know, even though I, those were mine as well. Thank you. But they were, they were, I didn't know how to categorize that, you know, homeless or, you know, housing deficient or how that ended up. But those were two of the ones actually also that were not able to, to sign. So I actually added them to the survey. I was well aware that they would, may not be included in the final documentation that you have required, but I still took it anyway.
Okay, and is that, for those surveys that are reflected where the address is listed as a shelter, is that your handwriting on those surveys?
Yes, it is.
So it includes the printing that's in there as well as the signature?
That is correct.
There are a few surveys where underneath the signature line, the word student is written in. Can you explain what that means?
Yes. Some of the, the houses that I was at, the parents were non-English speaking, and they had a child who was considered school age, but maybe not at the age of permission to, the age of 18, to say, this is how I'm documenting our household. So I would put whatever information that I had, I wanted to make it clear that that came from a student.
And so for the surveys where, where the word student is written at the bottom, Ms. Cobb, you are the one who wrote that in?
Yes.
And you collected those surveys as well and included the, and included the, the printing and the signature in your hand for those surveys?
Yes, I did.
Let's take a short break. I want to see if there are some additional questions from the receiver as well as the district. So it is currently 6:54. Let's come back around seven o'clock. So we'll go off the record.
Mr. Nornhold or Mr. Glass, would it be possible for the district team to go into a separate meeting room?
I'm looking and I do not believe we have breakout on the webinar. I don't believe that'll be possible.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are we ready to go back? Is everybody back? I see Ms. Snook, Mr. Moorford, okay. This Dr. Samuels. All right, Mr. Corcoran, are you ready?
Yes, I am, Your Honor.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. I, I don't, I have one follow-up question that I said I would go back to, but I don't think I have anything other than that. The, the follow-up question relates to the Health Foundations II course. And I know Dr. Mayers was looking into whether she could pinpoint if and where that is in Appendix A.
Yes, so I was inaccurate. It's, I found one and on page 434. However, Betsy was correct, and I should not have tried to correct her. That too was meant to be a, a partnership course with one of the higher ed partners.
Okay, so let me, let me make sure, and so page 434 is the English Language Arts II course. Is that what you're talking about?
I'm looking, looking at what Jen sent me, what I believe to be Appendix One, and I'm looking at page 434 on that. And it's Health Foundations I.
So is it page 434 of just Appendix A?
Correct.
Okay, I'm going to do some math.
Sorry about that.
So I think that takes, if, if you add the first 79 pages of the narrative to 434, you get 513. So page 513 is the start of the Health Foundations I course.
Correct.
So that, that's accurate, right?
Accurate, yes.
Okay, is there a Health Foundations II course in Appendix A?
No, that was the one that would be written by the partner when they come in and they have the articulation agreements.
And they have what? The articulation something?
I'm assuming an articulation agreement with higher ed that would be possibly offering that or running that.
Go ahead, I don't want to, I didn't want to interrupt you.
The curriculum submitted was that that would be taught by the, the charter school specific and explicitly. So courses that would be taught potentially by partners such as HACC and things like that are not in appendix because they are not our courses.
Does that mean that HACC or some other third party is going to teach Health Foundations II?
Correct, that is my understanding.
And has that been determined definitively that the charter school will not teach health sciences or Health Foundations II?
We're hoping to have an agreement with one of the universities or colleges to teach some of those courses such as nutrition. Or it could be, could be another course, but nutrition is the top one that I recall that we discussed as having it be a course that would be a college-level course taught during their 11th or 12th grade year.
Other than, we'll strike that, will Health Foundations I be taught by personnel from the charter school?
Yeah.
Are there any other nursing electives that will be taught by personnel employed by the charter school?
Yes, medical terminology.
Any others?
Maybe anatomy and physiology.
And what would be the certification requirements for individuals employed by the charter school to teach those specific courses?
That would be a life science.
But mostly, if it were medical terminology, they would be a registered nurse with a minimum of a, of a master's degree in education. And in, for some of the courses like AMP, it could be And in, for some of the courses like AMP, it could be a professor. Professor of one of the schools or a retired professor that might teach those courses who have previously taught those courses at the college level.
And you would, and you would bring, you would bring those folks on as employees of the charter school to teach those courses?
Yes. Yes, the whole idea is to have a, really a blend of, of, of teachers. So we, we recognize that we have to stand by the approved amount or percentage of teachers that are Pennsylvania-certified. But the others that we bring in, we want to bring in, in, in a wealth of knowledge from other disciplines that will also help the students in achieving this excellent education.
Great, thank you very much. We will have additional questions at the second hearing, but I think this information tonight really helped clarify some, some things that had been viewed in the initial review of the application. So thank you very much for all of your candor in answering those questions. The last item on the agenda for tonight is the receipt of any public comment. I'm going to ask Ms. Anderson, the Board Secretary, to let us know if any public comments were received by 4:00 PM this evening through the different mechanisms that the district made available to submit those.
No public comments were received by the considered time today.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Anderson. Does anybody have any questions before we recess the hearing for this evening? Hearing none. Thank you again, everyone, for coming. We appreciate your time and efforts this evening. The applicant will receive notice of the second hearing date. We will endeavor to try to schedule that in the next week or so. If you have any questions, Mr. Moorford, you can direct them to me regarding that scheduling process. And with that, the hearing is in recess. Thank you all very much. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, and thank you all.
All right, thank you.